All right. Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to call this meeting to order. Thank you all for being here on this beautiful day. It is time for a special session. We have a public hearing, so if I can get a motion to go into special session.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor of going into our 50th special session, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. All right. We're going to have a public hearing on the FY 2014 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, otherwise known as the CAPR. Mr. Kearns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide an opportunity for interested citizens to comment on the City of Hagerstown's Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, also known as the CAPR. Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, regulations require the city to submit the CAPR to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, commonly referred to as HUD, at the end of each program year. The CAPR is used to meet three basic purposes. It provides HUD with the information necessary to assess a grantee's ability to carry out CDBG programs in compliance with program regulations. It provides information for HUD to report to Congress, and it provides grantees with an opportunity to describe program achievements with their citizens. This CAPR provides details on Hagerstown's CDBG program for the fiscal year from July 1st, 2013, to June 30th, 2014. CDBG expenditures for the period totaled $757,076. Excluding general administration and planning costs, the amount expended on projects totaled $599,201. Of the total project expenditures, $449,629, or 76 percent of project spending, went to activities directly benefiting low and moderate income persons. Hagerstown CDBG activities are carried out to help improve the quality of life for residents and enhance city neighborhoods. Activities included home ownership incentive programs, housing rehabilitation programs, public service programs, and public facility improvements. In fiscal year 2014, $318,252 in CDBG funds were expended on public facilities and commercial property improvements. The projects assisted during the period included accessible curb ramp construction at various locations throughout the city, construction of Memorial Park, and demolition and renovation activities at the Potomac Beeed property at 4353 West Washington Street. In fiscal year 2014, approximately $166,000 in CDBG funds were expended on various housing and neighborhood activities. These include homeowner rehabilitation programs such as the Emergency Repair Program, the Home Repairs for Seniors Program, the Down Payment Assistance Program through Hagerstown Neighborhood Development Partnership, code inspections, and also the final stage of artist loft renovations. $104,975 in CDBG funds were used by six nonprofit agencies to provide services to approximately 2,200 low and moderate income citizens during fiscal year 2014. The agencies receiving assistance were Girls Incorporated, Senior Living Alternatives, Children in Need, Community Free Clinic, Community Action Council, and Food and Friends. CDBG regulations require that entitlement communities expend at least 70 percent of their CDBG funds on activities that benefit low and moderate income persons. 76 percent of Hagerstown's fiscal year 14 CDBG expenditures benefited low and moderate income persons. CDBG regulations also require that an entitlement community expend no more than 15 percent of the current year's entitlement plus the previous year's program income on public service activities. During the reporting period, Hagerstown expended 12 percent of its CDBG funding on public service activities. CDBG regulations also require that an entitlement community expend no more than 20 percent of the current year's entitlement funds plus the current year's program income on general program administration. During the reporting period, Hagerstown expended 20 percent of its CDBG funds on general program administration. Prior to submission to HUD, the city must make the CAPR report available for public review and comment. A copy of the draft CAPR has been available for review at the Department of Community and Economic Development Office, the downtown branch of the Washington County Free Library, and on the city's website at hagerstownmd.org. The program, or excuse me, the CAPR has been available for public review since September 2nd, 2014, and comments will continue to be received until September 19th, 2014. This concludes staff comments.
Thank you. And I understand we do not have anyone signed up to speak at the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on the consolidated annual report? Okay. Well, the record will remain open for, what, 30 days, 10 days?
Until September.
Until September 19th. So a few more days. And thank you. That will conclude the hearing. Onto our work session agenda. We have, first on our agenda, the check presentation. Is that right? The Valley Art Association turns 75 this year. Is that right?
Yes.
Congratulations. I didn't understand, will we be having a celebration this Saturday?
We will. We're celebrating how this is. We're doing the Bear Sculpture Festival for us. With us today is Sue Parker, Nancy Art Sennett, and Jamie Maltra. And Sue Parker will be on the Bear Sculpture Committee as well. Jamie has been on the training committee for the festival itself. And the Valley Art Association is turning 75. We'll be completing that at 1:00 p.m. on Saturday. We want to thank them because they've been a great partner for this festival in many ways. They also staff the Mansion House Art Gallery. They have their organization as well, bringing artists together. So we want to thank them. And with that, they're going to present us with $750 today.
We're seeing the fitting events since our 75th anniversary.
So we're delighted to be part of it. We applaud the city's efforts to put art in public spaces. We're happy to be in one of the first spaces in which art will appear. I'm personally delighted to have been part, or present, I should say, at the birth, at least conceptually, of the Bear Sculpture, and look forward to seeing it on Saturday.
Indeed. Okay. Well, thank you for your generosity and for your participation in the Mansion House. I always like to say that City Park is like our second arts and entertainment district, second A in the bubble. And along with the Museum of Fine Arts, the Hager House, which will also be celebrated this weekend, 275 years. It's going to be a great weekend at City Park, so I hope everyone comes out. I know there's a bike ride with me at 9:30.
There is. And then also, even though the anniversary isn't as always celebrated, the Hagerstown Mansion House weekend will be planned for opening ceremonies as well.
And then we have the unveiling of the sculpture at 11:00. The proclamation for the Hager House is noon, and then at 1:00.
We'll go to the Valley.
To the Mansion House for the 75th anniversary of the Valley Art Association. It is. It's going to be a great day. Thank you again.
The town has a lot of art activities. I'm trying to get them.
Oh.
But they're not squeezed together.
You're in it.
You're in it, Karen. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Can we move quickly?
Sure.
One more. One, two, three.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you. Indeed. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you. And that rounds out, we have so many arts organizations working together with Valley Art Association, the Washington County Museum of Fine Arts, the Maryland State Arts Council, Washington County Arts Council, the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. Everybody worked together to make this happen, so that's just one reason to celebrate.
That's right. Thank you so much.
Thanks for the artistic check, too, by the way.
Yes.
We'll take them any way we can get them, though.
The next item on our agenda is another celebration, and that's to introduce to everybody on the city council and our viewing audience, Cassie Lewis. Kathleen Lewis is the director of the Washington County Department of Business Development. So Cassie, would you like to come to the table, please? With you is our economic development manager, Jill Frick. And like I said, the purpose is to just introduce. We had lunch today, and it was nice to have an exchange of ideas there at lunch, and this is just a good time for council members to meet you. And maybe you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and your background?
Okay. I most recently come from DBED, the Maryland Department of Business and Economic Development. And prior to that, I've had a lot of experience at the county level, county levels, of economic development, both in Carroll County and in Baltimore County. And I've always said that I've come back to a local government, a local jurisdiction again, and I've always said that it's important to me because at the local level, you really get a chance to embed yourself in the community and really get to know your companies and all of your institutions that work together. So I'm real happy to be here back at a local level again. I think it's an opportunity for much more impact.
Thanks for coming on board. Mr. Alshire, you have any questions?
Yes, we have an EDC, and Don is on our EDC.
Let me just make a comment on, please.
Chris and I do serve on EDC, and so we've had some opportunities, and some limited opportunity, to interact with Cassie. And we welcome you. We're grateful that you chose Washington County and that there was an opportunity in Washington County. And your spirit of getting things done is really quite refreshing. I know that you've undertaken some things that have never before been undertaken in Washington County in an effort to get employment here, and we're grateful for that because we can use all the jobs we can get. So welcome, and we wish you lots of success and look forward to working with you. And when you're thinking about important places in Washington County, think Washington, think Hagerstown, Maryland. We're about a third of the county, and we count.
Yeah. I was saying to Dave today at lunch, you know, a vibrant core is very important to the county. So. And we shared a lot of different ideas, had a really good discussion today at lunch. Well, I think we're all on the same wavelength. I think we're all heading in the same direction.
And I just wanted to acknowledge that we all received a letter last week from the Economic Development Commission with their support of our downtown economic analysis and implementation plan, what we refer to now as the Community City Center Plan, because it truly is a community effort. It's not the city's plan, it is the community's plan, and I think it's good that the different bodies do see common interests and, you know, that what is good for Hagerstown is ultimately good for Washington County. So, Mr. Brubaker.
I just wanted to follow up on what Councilman Munson said. I served, as we talked out in the hall, I served on the EDC from 2006 to 2012. And I would just reinforce remembering that legally and tax-wise, the citizens of Hagerstown support the EDC just as much as somebody in Mogginsville or halfway or outside. So we are just as much a part of the county as any other citizen, and again, tax-wise and so forth. So it's an easy thing to start getting in the mode that there's separate jurisdictions, and since we do have a separate EDC, but we certainly need the assistance and would appreciate the assistance of, it's now, I'm going to, I keep saying EDC, I'm sorry. It's business development now.
Yeah.
I'll probably say EDC for a while. It's just there. So, but I do appreciate you coming on board and, you know, hope we can move forward. And, you know, of course, I'm interested, regional employment helps this as well, but, you know, I've done a number of things to support regional employment because it helps our citizens, but we also need in turn, you know, a focus here, too, as well.
Absolutely. Not only is Hagerstown important to me, but actually all of the towns are. I've made it part of my initial plan. I'm going around meeting with each of the mayors, and today was with Dave to get to know their towns and get to know their needs and what their issues are. But, you know, we're really all on this together. There is no just one county EDC or one Hagerstown or one Boonesboro. It really does take a village, and people cross jurisdictional lines to go to work.
Sure.
So it's important that we're all on the same page and moving forward.
But I will say we're a city, and as Don said, we're about a third of the county, and we're also about 75 percent of the municipal population, put them all together.
Yeah.
So we're the city in the bunch.
You're the big player.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate your welcome, and I would have to say that everyone in Washington County has been absolutely wonderful, helpful, supportive. And I'm really impressed with the spirit that I see among each, among individuals and among organizations. I've not really seen, I think, this level of commitment across such a wide spectrum of interests. I don't think I've ever seen that anywhere, and it's something, I think, pretty unique to Washington County.
Well, despite our differences, we do have a coalition that's gone to Annapolis, as you probably have heard, of all the players, the county, the school board, the city, and some of the other interest groups, every year. And so far, that's held. So in Annapolis, they always say it's how unique that is.
It is unique.
But they get lobbied separately by school boards and county commissioners from the same county and so forth.
Yeah. You pack a lot of punch when you go together. Well, thank you very much. I won't take up too much more of your time.
You're always welcome here at City Hall.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks, Jill. Next on our agenda is the Maryland Theater Seating Project. We're going to welcome back Benito and Jessica to the table. I was just on the website earlier figuring out how to order my seat online. I think I figured it out, so after the meeting, I'll be able to do it.
Great.
Easier than the healthcare website, yes.
You can just walk into the office.
You can do that.
That's what I did.
Right.
Well, thank you for having us back. Hopefully, everything's going real well. And we're thankful to always come for the city. We appreciate all the support you've given to the Maryland Theater. It's an important part of our community, and we work, the board works, Jessica works every day to keep ensuring that we keep that focus. What you have before you is, one point of interest is the new theater image. You know, we're celebrating our 100th anniversary, so we threw a CBB grant, which we really appreciate. We did a whole redesign of our literature, which we think presents a much more professional image. Jessica worked a lot, was really spearheading the project herself and presented it to the board. We got to vote on what she thought was appropriate for us, and we are here today with that, so that's just another part of the theater moving forward. So. In the folder, there's two parts. I first want to just draw, just one short note to the left is Maryland Theater Capital Improvement Overview. Not to address this today, but just to deliver it to you as just something we want to discuss in the future, because it really ties into that, Mayor, as you said, the Community City Center Plan. This is something that we've embarked on years back. It'll kind of give you a good overview of how the theater started several years ago to improve the theater, work on capital improvement projects. The city has been integral to that entire effort, the entire time, and you'll see your fingerprint on that through generous funding through different projects. And that's something we'd like to come back to address in the near future. Turning to Jessica, I guess we'll focus on the Maryland Theater seating campaign.
Thank you. And as you'll see, the seating campaign is really the last step in Phase 1 of facility restoration for the Maryland Theater. And we came at the beginning of the summer and presented our initial estimates of $650,000 for this project. Since then, our facilities committee and our staff have been working diligently to narrow down all of the estimates and all of the components to the seating project, which include flooring, carpeting, lighting, seating. And we have been able to drastically reduce the cost of the overall project down to $500,000. This is due to testing coming back stating that there was no lead paint present in the flooring. So that was wonderful.
That's always a pleasant surprise.
Yes. The balcony is wooden flooring that is in much better shape than we initially expected, plus it doesn't have the lead paint on top of it. Plus, we were able to find out that we are able to install larger chairs on that existing stadium flooring. And also, several of the upgrades that we initially felt would be very appealing, we brought in a historian, and he was able to identify just how old our seats are and what would be historically correct in our seating upgrade project, which actually eliminated some of those upgrades without compromising the quality and the longevity of the new seats. So preliminarily, we received an offer of $200,000 from Washington County. We do go back to the county commissioners next Tuesday to discuss that with them further. And we were offered by the city a match of $100,000 back in July. And we launched our sponsor seat program July 1st, knowing that we had a gap of about $200,000 to cover after local government sponsorships. And we received local media donations from 10 different media outlets, print, TV, radio. I'm sure you've all heard it. I run into somebody every day who says, "Higher back, softer cushions." So, plus, I've applied for three different seating grants, the Knott Foundation, the Hershey Family Foundation, and the Nora Roberts Foundation. All of those will respond back to us by the end of the year, but we don't know what their level of commitment, if any, is currently. So to date, we have just over $70,000. About $43,000 is paid, an additional $28,000 is in the theater's accounts receivables, meaning the sponsors have requested to be invoiced, and we've mailed them an invoice, and they have yet to pay. So, but they're committed. In order to move forward with the project, our plan was to have it installed and completed before our 100th anniversary. We'd like to do a grand unveiling of the seating and the plaster and the new HVAC and everything all at once prior to our 100th. So the only time that the performance schedule allows for that is just before Christmas. So the project we're hoping to run is December 22nd through February 11th, which means we have to order by October 1st in just a few weeks. The seating company is requesting an $80,000 down payment, and we have decided, because we have so many individuals coming to us still saying, "I know I'm going to sponsor a seat, but I haven't. I'll do it this week. I'll do it next week." We've decided to leave it open until Christmas. We think we'll miss some opportunities if we don't, but we're still advertising that it ends next Monday, the 22nd. So today, we're really here to make a final request of the city's original $100,000 match plus an additional $50,000. Based on what Benito said, we feel this is a really strong project for the Community City Center Plan, and we feel that it'll bring overall theater restoration to a big finish, for lack of a better term. I think that people will walk in and really see the beauty of the Maryland Theater and what it should be.
Not only see it, but they'll feel it.
Right. Exactly. They'll enjoy it.
Yeah.
And it's really not just about an appealing look, it's about accessibility. This includes all-new ADA compliance seating. It includes new seats in the box seats. Our current metal seats are just destroying the plaster on the walls. I don't want to have that continue. The floor is completely buckled and actually raising up in the center of the theater at this time. You can see under the floor about a half an inch. It's just not a great environment anymore, unfortunately. So hopefully, we don't need that additional funding that I'm requesting now, once we hear back on the grant applications that we filed.
And you said that'll be by the end of the calendar year, you think?
Yes, we should here in December. One of them is sooner than December, and, you know, we know that we'll continue to receive seating sponsorships from community members. We get them in the mail every day, so I know that number will continue to rise.
Well, I appreciate all your efforts and the transparency in bringing us the information. About how many seats is the $71,050 worth? How many seats have you gotten sponsored? Don't need to put you on the spot, but...
It's hard, because some have bought different levels of seats.
Right.
So there's a...
Yeah, they range from $300, $650, and $950, so I'd have to double-check. I'm sorry. I should know that.
So when I'm looking online, and some of them are Xed out, those are the ones that are already sponsored?
Yes, those are bought. Yes, yes.
I see. Okay.
And we know that there's others out there that have committed sections and areas that we're going to be going ahead and following up and talking to.
Well, I have to say, I was, I had a board member of the theater personally reach out to me to remind me, which was very helpful, and I appreciated that.
What we found is most people have been very busy with the summer. Now that everyone's coming back, they're hearing it, and they remember, it's like, "Oh, yes, I did want to do that."
Checking things off our to-do list.
So, yeah. So we know there's a lot of people out there that have said, "You know, I meant to do it. I haven't done it yet. Can I still do it?" And we're going to keep pressing forward on that.
Have you talked to Bill Adonio about the bond bill again this spring?
Yes, we have. I've had several conversations with him about that. I think he's waiting to be reelected, and then we'll move forward with that.
Okay.
And the focus of that bond bill would be backstage improvements.
Right. The future. I realize it's not in time for your seats, but it's still important to try to use that resource to move ahead. We can't just do it all locally.
He's very committed to doing it again, yes.
Yeah. Because I mentioned it to him, so.
Good. Thank you.
Just one more thing, if I could. This is yesterday's New Yorker magazine. I don't know if you picked up your latest copy, but in it, there's a really wonderful article on Bill Cosby, and it's called "The Eternal Paternal," on the annals of comedy here. And I just want you to know that the Maryland Theater is mentioned.
Really?
On page 41 of the latest edition of New Yorker and referred to as the venerable Maryland Theater. So, and yours truly was quoted in here, you know, when I gave him the key to the city, but I just wanted to point that out so you can go get your copy of the latest New Yorker, and the intelligentsia will be swarming in Hagerstown anytime now.
Mayor, you're being modest. They didn't refer to you as venerable, did they?
No.
They referred to you as...
Well, they referred to me as young.
Young, okay. Just one...
Well, that's okay.
But, you know, I thought it was great, you know.
It is.
Any ink is good ink, I guess, free ink. But, yeah, so the hordes will be swarming from New York anytime now to visit the venerable Maryland Theater.
Good.
Well, it's exciting. The seating program, like you know, we've talked a lot, it's a capstone of Phase 1, and it really kind of sets the stage for our 100th anniversary to relaunch the theater into its next century.
Absolutely.
So we're very excited, and we just appreciate your support.
I would just say, keep up the good work.
I have no problem with $100,000. I think the idea of the matching, the matching grant was an effort to do what I think has been achieved substantial contributions. I think with the other requests, what we need to do is see where you're at. I can't conceive where you're at financially now that ultimately, if needed, government wouldn't fill the gap, and that would shock me. I wouldn't want to commit $50,000 right now, though. I think that's a mistake for a variety of reasons, including fundraising reasons, including grant reasons. I'd much prefer to see fundraising and grant writing going on without a statement essentially saying, "We have commitments to fill the gap by government right now," which could lead one to believe to do, "This is a funded project. It doesn't need these things."
Technically, if I remember, the $100,000 was a match, and we've only technically got $70,000 to match against. I'm not saying we won't do it, but I would like to see, you know, see it out there for people to try. And like Lou said, I think we need to wait and see how these grants work out, and, I mean, we're in a tough bind, too, as you know. So to commit right now, I think is awkward.
Well, I think that's, we appreciate that, and that's why we went after and sharpened the pencils and really pushed on price and bringing it down to a reasonable error we felt was better. And then we're continuing to go out and ask the public and get their support behind. And there's been no negative in that respect at all, it's just people getting the time to go ahead and make that purchase.
Is that board member still making telephone calls?
Yes.
Oh, good. I'm unclear about this. You have to order your seats by October 1st. So are you going to order the seats on October 1st?
That's the intention.
All of them? There's not going to be a combination of new seats and old seats, right?
No, they're all new.
Okay. Okay, very good. Now, I will point out this one thing before you leave the table, and I think this is a bit of good news, and it's thanks to this mayor and city council. If you looked out your back window, if you had a back window, you would note that there are some structures that were once there, real, real, real trash that are no longer there, behind the bead shop and the building beside the bead shop. The structures are down now, the buildings are being sealed, and it's really a major difference in that alley back there where those buildings were being taken down. So everyone's, well, open up the back window and say, "The city of Hagerstown improved our view."
Thank you.
We do see that every time we open the doors to load in a show backstage, so thank you. We do. And that's, you know, when an artist pulls into the theater, that's where they pull in, the back alley, so.
Right.
Well, I would like to really encourage the greater Hagerstown community, Washington County, even people, anybody who attends and uses the Maryland Theater to think about doing this. anybody who attends and uses the Maryland Theater to think about doing this. I mean, if you want to look at it from a selfish perspective, your name's going to be there for posterity, when there's another word beyond venerable to describe it. But, and I'm not sure what that word is, but it's a real opportunity. It's kind of a fun opportunity, the way they're doing it. And you can tangibly see the results of your contribution. And I just want, you know, the greater Hagerstown area to step forward and support this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, once again, they're operating, Benito is doing this pro bono, working on this, working hard. So the Maryland Theater is operating with about as limited a budget as you could do. Jessica's doing a wonderful job bringing the youth in again, but with lots of energy, lots of enthusiasm and lots of new ideas. And there's a capital program. Anybody can get this and look at what the long-range plan is and what the objectives are. So it's not just a piece by piece, bit by bit. There's a, there's a long-range, very long-range programming.
It's definitely been an investment over the last four or five years of patience, diligent focus of improving the operations, a great board. I really appreciate the board we have, working with Jessica and this incredible staff. Being a volunteer is wonderful and is part of the organization that's moving forward with the vision like it is. And so for the city and the county and Washington County, the theater takes serious its future, as part in the future. And that's why every decision we make is got that understanding, so.
And we are working, Jessica especially, on programming, getting better acts, getting more that. And these improvements will all lead to that, the backstage improvements especially. But the whole overall thing, effort, will bring better acts, which people always mention. And so, you know, besides the tangible things like seats, you know, there's a whole program going on here that, you know, should result in a much better, really, that serves the whole community.
Absolutely, thank you.
Well, finally, I would just want to clarify two things, especially on the funding. The match, dollar for dollar, up to a hundred thousand. I think what I hear the majority saying is that even if you don't quite make it there by the end of the year, it's likely we're going to give you the whole hundred thousand.
They're going to go way over a hundred thousand anyhow.
That's what I understand, but, right, right. And that's the whole goal of extending it to the deadline and giving more people an opportunity. And then if there's still a gap, what I hear you saying is there may be a need for even more, because that would, well, that would bring you to five hundred, would it not? No, that would bring you to four hundred. So you would still have a gap, depending on what other grants come in.
And Jessica's working with us to, we're looking at all ways to raise that money without asking the city and the county.
Right, and I think.
I just wanted to clarify for, especially Bruce and staff as they're preparing the budget, you know, what sources of funds we're looking at. And I think we discussed it the last time we approved the resolution in July, that even if you didn't quite make that hundred thousand, that we would be solid on that.
But at the same time, I would encourage, I consider those grants, I consider that community support from the private sector, if you can get that. I'm glad you've done that. I hope they realize how important this facility is and how much volunteer work goes into it. You know, you're operating on a shoestring. I wish I could think of a theatrical term for that, but I can't, so.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate all your support, thank you.
Thank you.
It's our pleasure.
And we appreciate all yours, too.
Yeah.
You've put a lot of time and effort into this over the years. And it's all been free to the citizens of Washington County. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I hope our PR resources have been offered to you and are being used.
Oh, yes.
Website.
Yes, definitely. You've sent out media announcements.
I assumed that we were doing.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate your time.
Next, we have a discussion on the workers' comp program. And Karen Paulson and Ed Seward are here.
Hey, Pat.
Welcome to the table. Kevin DeHaven is also.
Hello. Welcome back.
All right, obviously joined by Ed Seward from CBIZ to continue the discussion on workers' compensation and the feasibility of moving forward with the self-funded program. As we discussed on August twelfth, there are significant real-dollar savings to be had from a transition. And basically, CBIZ is projecting a two million dollar, five-year savings. So Ed has provided some updates to his analysis based on some feedback from the last work session. And I'd like to focus this afternoon on the numbers and the updated study, if we could. Staff would like to come back in October to an additional work session to basically continue the discussion on staffing support that's necessary for a successful transition. So everyone should have received an updated spreadsheet today. Good. So without further ado, I'll hand it over to Ed and let him walk through.
Thank you for having me back. One of the things, as I was driving back home after the last session we got together, I wasn't very clear in my mind of the savings over the long term. We had the five-year projection, we had numbers that make absolutely perfect sense to move forward with this conversion to self-insurance. But I could tell there were some questions about longer than five years and also the savings are doing so. So what you have in the packet provided by Karen is a look at a ten-year window. And the estimated future claims payment, which is this chart here, the spreadsheet, that is simply extending out over ten years how the, when I refer to cash flow savings, how it works on an ongoing basis. One of the questions we had last time was, after five years, then the savings is all caught up and we're then not looking at tremendous savings going forward. Well, the information I gave at that time wasn't clear that that is not the case. The cash flow savings is an ongoing basis. And as the chart shows, the reason for that is that workers' compensation claims are not all paid in the year in which they occur. And historically, with some fluctuations, you see a percentage of claims paid in the first year, normally paid enclosed within five years is the majority of claims. So if you look at the spreadsheet, the analysis is simply showing that the estimated losses for each of those years in the ten-year period are spread over five years. So if you look at the totals for five years, at the bottom, the totals I have listed, five years of estimated losses, a little over four million dollars were the actual amount of paid during that same five-year period, about two and a half. Over the ten-year period, roughly eight point seven were the actual amount paid, six point nine. Again, it's simply numerically showing that, again, not all claims are paid within the year they occur. So I hope this chart will answer the, what I wasn't very clear on last time, and that the cash flow savings are ongoing through the life of the program. The second update was also, which is Attachment C. I was asked to show the same savings, but expand the previous spreadsheet using the projected one point four nine experience mod. If you recall, the first projection I had done was using the existing one point zero four. And the one point four nine, again, is the estimated experience modification that CBIZ has calculated based on historic losses for these past years. And so I inserted those and also then projected beyond the five years out through ten years. The same methodology was used. And the spreadsheet here is simply showing that as the program continues, the savings per year are ongoing and the numbers are substantial. Clearly, these are estimates. If your claim experience would be higher than we're projecting, the savings would be less. Clearly, if your losses are less than I'm projecting, your savings would be more. These are our best-case or best estimates, intelligent estimates based on prior loss history, establishing a loss pick, which is a projected loss based on history and projecting forward. So these two updates, again, were hopefully to clarify what I, personally, I think I wasn't clear on last time about projected savings for the long term with the program. And secondly, I just wanted to mention, then I'll take any questions you may have, that the key to the program, as I mentioned last time, is aggressive safety, loss control, managing claims, prompt reporting, safety committees, all these things combined. It means the mayor and council, it means your department heads, it means the unions involved, and all employees have to be on board with the program. And clearly, it's a win-win for everybody in terms of employees, lost time, safer work environment, fewer people off work, which means other employees don't have to pick up the slack. From the management and city side, there are substantial monetary savings which will help the bottom line of the budget. Clearly, every dollar saved in a claim payment or a claim not being paid or made is a direct savings to the city. And secondly, as we move forward, which I do hope the city does consider adopting the program, I would recommend that you do fund the program, at least for the first several years, at the recommended amounts I have on the bottom of the Attachment C. I have recommended budget amount, and that is simply based on estimated or projected losses plus the expenses to run the program. And as you'll see, those numbers, the first year, a million, a little over a million dollars, second year, a million one, and so on and so forth. I think the current year, your losses have trended downward. But again, this is, I think, a very good year. I think the folks in HR have been aggressive this year in working to reduce reserves on outstanding claims and staying on top of things. So, but until we have a trend established with this new program, I do recommend you fund the full amounts. That those monies go into a deposit account, savings account, if you would, and claims are paid from that amount. So the numbers here are what can be budgeted in the city's budget. And obviously, any surplus from year to year can build that fund. And then in the future years, consider reducing the amount needed to fund the losses. But for the first several years, again, I do recommend that you fund what I've noted here. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions if I can. If not, I'll get back with answers as quick as I can.
Mr. Brubaker.
Well, I remember, I may be remembering wrongly, I thought our comp cost this year was a million and a half, plus or minus. Is that just one component of it, or?
I think the budget was a million three fifty. Michelle, have I got that right, in the current year?
A million three forty-six oh fifty.
It had been projected higher.
Right, I guess that was the projection, was a million and a half I was working from. Then what's the difference between that and the two million that you have in here for standard insurance cost?
If you look at the very top in the first section, you'll see this spreadsheet is reflecting anticipated one point four nine experience mod.
Which spreadsheet are you on? I'm on Attachment C.
Attachment C.
Yeah.
And if you look at the heading, it references one point four nine, where the initial and the current estimated premium of a million three, which you're paying now, that's currently using one point zero four. And what I'm saying is, IWhiff, or Chesapeake IWhiff, is in process of converting to NCCI or National Council Compensation, an industry standard. They've not participated in the past. And that's what we've calculated based on your losses, that that mod will probably go to one point four nine from the one point oh four. So the difference in standard premium, this projection of two million, is reflecting basically a forty-five percent increase just because of the loss history.
Well, that's what I said, it's roughly fifty percent, one point four nine, fifty percent of what we're paying now added on.
Yes, that's simply because of the experience mod.
Fifty percent of one three four six, add it on, that's, there's your two million, right?
Yes, yes. And that's exactly where the number comes from.
But so that's a hypothetical, if the model, if the new requirements had been enforced in two thousand fifteen. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, if, if in two thousand fifteen, the mod does change to one point four nine, that's what I'm projecting the premium to be, yes.
So you're saying we're avoiding, let's go to FY sixteen, that's the next budget year. Let's say we're, we're avoiding, so you're saying that our premium would likely to be two one oh four roughly?
Yes.
Under the new.
Yes.
Model, under the existing model. It would jump that much?
Yes, and what we're looking for there, Councilman, is that that premium is a combination of projecting a two percent increase in payroll and we're projecting an average of a three percent rate increase for the workers' compensation premiums themselves, the classifications, and the one point four nine mod. So with those changes, the mod, the payroll increase.
Well, the one four nine is the real applicable.
Oh, absolutely.
Thing, the other two are minor compared to that.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
Okay.
On these, I guess it's the first page, Attachment A. You have the one point three four six zero five zero at the one point oh four escalator, correct?
Yes.
But then when you go, and maybe I'm just not following this right. You go back to Attachment C, and you have the one point four nine escalator, and you got it at two zero zero five two one seven.
Yes.
But then the next year, you have it at two one oh four nine oh nine, which I'm assuming what you're doing is you're using year two of the one point oh four from the first sheet, correct? In other words, you're taking that point four nine times the second number, the one for two thousand fifteen, from the first sheet.
What we're looking at, yes.
And maybe, I guess, I'm trying to figure out, because what it looks like you're doing on the first sheet is you're using that one point oh four in a static process over a six-year period. And doing it at a point oh four each year.
No, what you need to look at there, your answer is, your rationale, you're exactly right. But we're starting with a number, I'm deleting four percent.
Right.
To get back to the one point zero. Then we're taking the two percent rate increase, the three percent premium increase, the two percent payroll increase, three percent rate increase, and then the one point four nine. So I've removed the one point oh four to start the calculation.
And I think I'm following that. Again, it looks like on Sheet one, the Attachment A, you're using the point oh four in sort of a year-by-year jump. I guess I'm confused, when you come to Attachment C, why you're not using the one point four nine as a year-by-year jump. But you're jumping the numbers off of the one point oh four.
We're starting with, with those numbers representing what costs both schedules.
Okay.
Original, which is the one oh four.
Right.
You look at the, the premium is based on the payroll.
Yeah.
Okay, and the rates in effect at the time. And then we're, for the subsequent years, we're looking again at the payroll increase of two percent for the city's payroll. We're also looking at a projected three percent increase in the premium rates from Chesapeake IWhiff. And then we're applying the one point oh four mod. So, and the one, the spreadsheet Attachment C now, we're doing the same thing, but we're back, we took off the one point zero four mod and started out with just the premium times the payroll increase, times the rate, times the one point four nine. So we're not compounding, it's.
Okay. I expected the numbers like Exhibit A, or Attachment A, I expected Attachment C to be compounding at the one point four nine as well. But you're saying it's not doing that.
I did not do it that way, no.
It's a one-time, one four nine, it's a one-time application.
Well, I use.
Then you carry it out.
Yes, the one point four nine.
It was a one-time adjustment to show the savings difference.
Right, each year, potentially, the one point four nine can change up or down. I think the last meeting we had, you wanted to see a projection for ten years if the mod was one point four nine. So that's what we projected.
Which is why I'm assuming you're recommending that we go with the recommended figure for the first part. All right, isn't that what you said in here?
Yes, the recommended budget amount?
Yeah.
Yes, at the bottom of the Attachment C. And again.
Because of that unknown.
Yes, yes. And again, what I'm projecting is, what makes this program work is control of losses. So this is, from my opinion, is potentially the worst-case scenario.
But if we can't control losses, then it doesn't work.
Now, you're saying it's a worst-case scenario.
Well, I'm just, I'll back up.
Conservative, let's call it.
It's a conservative approach.
Conservative scenario is a better word for it.
Yes, that's correct.
Maybe not worst-case, but conservative, is that what you're saying?
That is correct, that is correct. And I say that with confidence, only because historically, the losses, even with presumption claims. claims in police and fire, the losses have not been such that these projections would have been exceeded in each of the years. Yes, it could. That's absolutely, 100% correct. But by the same token, it's, from a conservative perspective, I don't see that happening. It could, but I don't see that happening. So in terms of, again, if losses are higher than we have projected in our spreadsheet, yes, the savings are less than we're projecting, clearly. By the same token, say if losses are better, savings are much better than I'm projecting.
And our experience in controlling losses?
Thus far, has not been good.
That's what I guess I'm getting at.
Yes, has not been good.
So if we implement this change in program, but don't change that process, there will be no benefit?
Then long-term.
Especially if we don't go with the recommended amount. I would assume it'd be even worse.
Well, the trending, if your losses continue as they are now, my opinion is there would still be savings. And the reason I say that is the losses we've started with here, the loss pick, loss projection that I'm using, is based on historically, your losses, your average losses for the past number of years. So going forward, this 800,000, 816, 832, et cetera, those projected losses, that is using the same trended losses. They're increasing at the same rate as payroll increases. So this projection is utilizing the assumption that your losses are not increasing, and even so, there is a projected savings by doing so.
So by addressing these workplace safety and minimizing the losses, then there could potentially be even more savings.
Yes.
Realized in this change.
That is correct.
Which, again, leaves more money available for other things, if people would only realize.
Right.
Absolutely.
The only question I have with relation to that, I've asked it before, and I'll ask it again, is, we've been told repeatedly that the problem with our claims primarily are presumptive losses. Cancer, lung disease, heart attack. That's what's driving this. Now, if that's what's driving this versus accidents in the workplace, I'm really interested in how and where we have an expectation that these presumptive claims over the next five to 10 years are going to decrease. Why would you think the presumptive claims would decrease? What could we be doing that we're not doing to have that happen?
I think the city has already taken the first step. And that is, for example, my understanding is that the fire department, correct me if I'm wrong, already for new hires, has a mandatory periodic physical examination. That's a big requirement, police department.
And while I appreciate that, I'm talking about the next five to 10 years. You're talking, we're talking about new hires, and I'm talking about the guys that are having heart disease and cancer, or the people on the backend of this thing. And that's my only concern. I have, it seems we've been told repeatedly for the last five to 10 years, that our safety program has been excellent, and that our accidents have really been held to a minimum. Now, I may be wrong about that. If I'm wrong, I stand to be corrected, but my recollection is that we're repeatedly told this is being driven by presumptive claims. And I'm not giving any opinion on whether I think the self-funded model is better or worse, but I continue to have problems with the theory that we're going to be able somehow or another to lower our claims by doing something that we're not doing now, over the next five to 10. I totally compare on new hires, I think we have to do more on that, but I have some real concerns about the theory that we're going to be lowering our claims.
That doesn't show lowering.
No, it's not projecting lowering claims.
It's really trying to keep the rate of increase down. So the claims aren't lowered in this model to get the savings. But you have a very good point.
But the rate of increase to me is lowering.
The rate of increase.
To me, we're talking a lot of semantics.
Well, I know, but I just want to be clear, we're not reducing them. But right, I think it's a legitimate question. What is that rate of increase likely to be that we can't control due to the state legislature?
And I think the only way.
It's a very good question.
I think the only way that we, sitting here, could come to any sort of theory about that is I would need to know what the age group of our fire and our fire department are, right? Top age group. That'd give you at least some clue, and that's about the only thing you could have. I mean, and that's only a clue. That's certainly nothing more than that.
I might add, on that topic, that I mentioned at the outset, the program here requires, or will require, for significant savings going forward, a lot of cooperation, and that means city unions. And I can only just reference, the program has worked very well in the city of Cumberland with unions, et cetera. And just as a side note, and I can't talk numbers or hard dollars because I don't want their permission to do so, but in Washington County, I handle the Fire and Rescue Association, a great group, doing well. When we took over, when CBiz got involved in 2010 as the broker, and worked with Selective Insurance Company, which was the incumbent carrier, part of the requirements at that time were that the association, in order to continue and maintain the workers' compensation coverage, that there had to be aggressive loss control. And that was safety committees, accident investigation, mandatory physicals for volunteers running calls, and so on, so forth. The association responded wonderfully, it's over a period of time. And I'll just mention that in four years, the losses for the four years prior to this program starting, and the four years after, reduced the losses 82%.
Wow.
Now, again, you know, a large claim could throw it out of kilter, but the association, the officers, the various fire companies, it hasn't been easy. It's not comfortable, and it's inconvenient for volunteers to go have a physical and those type things. But those, that type of a program, I say aggressive because everyone had to comply, within, I think there was a two-year window to get them done, and so on. But there was already a program in place for physicals that were paid for by the county, and so on, so forth. This was just more enforcement of that. So, Councilman, your comments are exactly right. How do we know we're going to reduce losses or control claims? That's probably the million-dollar question. But can it be done? Yes. And has it been done? Yes. But again, there's a difference between volunteers, I know, and paid employees. I understand that as well.
But you raise a good point in saying that we have to engage those stakeholders to make them realize that it's in their interest to be safer at work. And I would also note that part of the action requested in making this change is the additional staff member that would be hired by Human Resources. And do you want to talk about specifically how that would tie into what the goals we would try to accomplish with loss control?
I'd like to leave the staffing discussion for October, but I'll just say, in terms of wellness and health, we are self-funded for our health insurance, so we do have a vested interest in our employee health. Yes, it's hard to, you know, consider retirees after the fact when they're coming back. But, you know, police, for example, has instituted some very good steps in terms of employee health with some of the new hires. For several years now, they have standards where they have to meet physical standards. It's based off the Cooper Institute. New hires also sign and pledge to be tobacco-free. So those are the kinds of things that we need to build upon to really improve employees' health and build stakeholdership.
That reminded me of another question, if you got mine. Where is that position in this, in these calculations?
It's not included in this.
It's not included?
No.
Well, I think, to be fair, whatever portion of that position is dedicated to this program should be included in your costs, because it's a cost.
Correct. It would be an expense.
So that, you know, would reduce by 80 or 100,000, this amount here.
Correct.
I think it ought to be in there.
Okay, I have a question.
Because that's a net. I mean, it's part of the net. You still have your savings, but it reduces the net. And if it's a portion, that ought to be that portion.
Mr. Brunson? Most of the conversation's been about loss control, and it makes a lot of sense. But I see that loss control's budgeted at $19,200 forever. You can't, you can hardly even get a half of, half of an employee for that kind of money, or a part-time employee for that kind of money. What's that $19,000 bias?
That $19,000 is a loss control representative at $200 per hour. That's roughly 12 full days. And the, that's the rate that CBiz's loss control charges. An insurance company, if you notice in the quotes, their rate is $140 an hour, so you already have more time. Basically, that means that the loss control representative that you're paying at that rate, be it us or insurance company rep, or an outside consultant, is helping to set up your safety programs, help to coordinate that.
Okay, so that's, okay, that's how it's going to work.
Basically, a consultant.
Yes, exactly what it is. Yes.
Okay. That's really very clarifying. Thank you. But I also want to say thank you for being here today. The information you have brought us today has been very helpful in understanding how this, this thing's going to work.
Good.
I had any number of questions when you left last time, and you've clarified them all, so thank you.
Frankly, I had questions myself that I wasn't clear, particularly in your comment about cash flow savings long-term. That's, and I thought that was, thank you for the opportunity to come back and do this.
Absolutely, and we'll.
I'm glad to see the results.
We'll have another agenda in October with this topic on, back for discussion. Okay. Any, yes, Mr. Alshon? I'll just note two things, one from last discussion. But the first is, you know, I look at these projections and the conversation, and comparable governmental entities that have this, and self-insured, you know, is a competitive way to go. I mean, I don't have any problem with that. I don't buy into the notion wholly that, in our cases and the other, that there's going to be the level of savings that we envision achieving, and, you know, it's a gamble. I will reiterate, though, that, you know, there are, I think that there are opportunities at a local level like this, when you have a number of local governmental jurisdictions that are self-insured, for the long-term benefit of all of those parties, to look at a self-insured program in which they participate collectively, being the city, and the county, and the education system, and those types of community partners. So I still think that that's, that that's where we could get to in the future.
Okay, and one clarification, too. Karen, you anticipate that if we approve this, this plan will take effect when?
If everything's approved, July 1st would be a clean target date.
Okay. Yeah, that would put us in line with our budget. That would help. Okay, thank you.
Karen, when it comes to, excuse me, Bruce, when it comes to the mandatory physicals, is that a problem with some employees? You were saying, you know, this.
I would suspect, excuse me for interrupting, but I would suspect that would have to be negotiated.
Okay. That's what has to be done, then? Okay.
I would suspect that's not something you can mandate. You have to be discussed.
Okay. Well, that's what I'm saying, when you said that that's what had happened with Farrar.
But there were.
Right. But that's what I wanted to know.
Right now, we've got it in place for new hires for police, police contract.
Right. It doesn't affect those who were hired before that one.
Correct.
Okay. It's 40%, 46% of police officers are now in Florida. So it's been in place for five years. And they're at 46% right now. It could be 47%.
But not at all in fire?
No. They do have some fitness standards upon hire, but then after that.
Right. After hiring.
And just to add, for the police department, it's not contractual at this point. It's the union that worked with the police department to establish the program. And currently, only two officers have not passed the Cooper exam. So it's successful.
And if worse comes to worse, we can almost go back to the old way, the way we're doing it now, right?
Correct.
I mean, if things don't work out as we anticipate.
We're optimistic that they will, but in worst-case scenario.
Well, it appears that there's good reason to be optimistic.
If you could just to clarify, could you restate your assumptions on claim projections on attachment A for those five years? You're using the 1.04 mod each year.
Yes, attachment A, your current experience modification is 1.04. And the losses and savings, et cetera, projected here utilize the existing mod 1.04, which will, again, change on an annual basis, up or down, but I simply use what was in place now, based on the.
Which, if I could, so that means you didn't assume any decrease in claims in the projected years?
I did not.
Right. So you're looking at our current experience and saying that carries through for.
That is correct.
For five years.
That is correct. And the reason I did not make a change there is an experience modification is an average of your losses over a three-year rolling period. So the 1.04 would not be the current year-end, but the prior three. So next year's mod, one year drops off, or pick up another one, and so on, and so forth. So not knowing what losses are going to ultimately be for the current year, expiring next July 1st, or June 30th, it's, it wouldn't even be an intelligent guess to guess what the mod is. The 1.49 is, again, using the same loss data that Chesapeake IWhiff used for their 1.04, they simply calculate differently. And they're moving to becoming a member of this national association and adopting their standards. And that's why the software we have internally is historically been within a couple points of where we think it's going to be. So the 1.49, I would say it could be 1.47, could be 1.51. It's close, based on our past experience.
And that's the importance of self-insure, because there is no mod.
Correct. Correct.
The mod goes out the window.
Experience mod, the insurance component, I won't ramble here, but the insurance component of a self-insured program, the price you pay, the premium you pay, is specifically the result of your losses, your loss experience. If your trends are down, your losses are down, the size of losses go down, that shows the excess carrier, the potential for getting up to the point where it hits their excess and insurance steps in, or less and less likely. So the, again, experience modification does not apply when you're self-insured. It's still reported, so that should you ever change back to a standard program, the information would be there, and every carrier uses the same modification.
Thanks again for your helpful information.
Oh, you're welcome. Nothing like talking about insurance, right?
See you back in October. Yeah.
You're quite right. Anytime, questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Welcome, Councilmember Nye.
I should have only had my day.
No, thanks. We all have those days. Our next topic is S&amp;P ratings upgrade. Our finance director is here to share the good news and the ring the bell of caution, perhaps? I don't know.
That's right. Good evening. We need to mark this down. Two weeks in a row, coming to the table, not with bad news, but with goodness. Bruce wasn't here last week. I said it was a relief to be sitting here discussing something other than budget, Bruce.
We'll be discussing it soon enough.
That's right. I've already been, been working towards that. Anyway, this evening is all about just covering some key points. In June, on June 20, 2014, we received a memo from Standard &amp; Poor's, which is one of our current rating agencies. And they were notifying us that we received a bond rating upgrade. We were upgraded from AA- to AA status, and that's one notch. What they did not provide, but what I included in the packet, and I apologize, it's a little small print on the back, it was a pretty colorful chart. On page two, you can actually see, what I tried to do was go out and get, there's three rating agencies, and this chart was really nice because it just lists all the different ratings for all three of those agencies side by side, and it actually gives you a little description on what that creditworthiness actually means. So just so we can kind of get a feel for Standard &amp; Poor's, there's only two other ratings that are a higher grade than where we currently are, as of June 20. So that's, that's good news. And the rest of the packet is the memo that they actually sent, and they. And the rest of the packet is the memo that they actually sent, and they go into some description and some rationale on how they arrived and are of the opinion that we deserve this upgrade. So if you just flip in your packet, and we'll follow along. One of the first thing that they looked at was some demographic information, and they actually looked not necessarily at City of Hagerstown statistics, but overall metropolitan county-level statistics. And what they noted there was favorable with changes in the economy. So that was good news. And we can just kind of follow it bullet by bullet. One of the other key areas that they mentioned is our overall management condition, and that we had strong financial management practices. They specifically look in the areas of budget assumptions, if your general fund budget is balanced. They liked the fact and commented on the fact that we include a five-year financial forecast, not just for our operating, but also for our capital planning and our capital improvement projects. They commend us on our adopted general fund reserve policy, and that we require an unreserved fund balance, and again, just as a reminder, unreserved general fund fund balance, in excess of 10% of our budget. They commended us on our debt management policy, and where our current limits and criteria were there. One of the next things that they did was looked at the flexibility of our budget and commented that it was very strong. They acknowledged that in our budget, we were looking at using fund balance reserves for the first time in fiscal year 15. But what they noted, and I found most important, was that last sentence, that we plan to use those funds for capital expenditures. At the same time, it left our unreserved fund balance very strong, especially in comparison to GFOA best standards. If we kind of flip the page, the next to last bullet, they mentioned about our debt and contingent liabilities profile is strong, and one of the things that they looked at there was, they looked at the trend in our outstanding bond issues and our outstanding annual debt service requirements. And they're acknowledging that with where we currently have our outstanding debt, that in the future periods, that we are continuing to pay down and pay off old debt at a rate a little bit faster than what we're borrowing and incurring new debt. In this bullet, they actually go on to say, they kind of worded some things that we have been, we've stated before, and our auditors have mentioned, and that is, excuse me, I'm sorry, that once we are required, and it starts with fiscal year 15 financials, to disclose and include unfunded pension liabilities within our financial statements, that they feel that that will have a negative impact on our credit rating. However, to offset that, they are actually looking at how much we, as an employer, contribute to our pensions, and they're acknowledging that because we continue to contribute at 100%, and that we haven't decreased that, that that helps offset what would otherwise be a negative impact, which is good for us. And something that we have stated before, we haven't, in the years when the budget hit in fiscal year 10 through current, we have not actually reduced any of the contributions that we, as an employer, contribute to the pensions, and this is both pensions. This is State of Maryland, as well as police and fire pension. So they're just kind of giving us a note there. They also include the OPEB obligations with that. And just as a reminder, in fiscal year 13, when we ended the year, and if I look at the unfunded liability that we had estimated from our actuaries at that time for both, it was right about $53 million. So that's a pretty significant liability that we will incur in the next several years when we have to add both pension and OPEB to our statements. Last thing, they're just saying that overall, all of Maryland and all the municipalities get the same rating because they do one rating for Maryland municipalities, and then everybody gets scored on that last little bullet. So they look at several different criteria, several different factors. But overall, good news. With Standard-
They don't expect to change this in the next two years, it says.
Right. Exactly. That's actually what it was starting to say. In the past, Standard &amp; Poor's only did a rating review for us every time we went to the market with a public bond issue, and Moody's has continued that practice. We haven't been reevaluated with Moody's since 2011. Standard &amp; Poor's has updated their practices and their procedures, and they will reevaluate a minimum every two years, regardless of whether we don't issue bonds or not. So this is our rating, unless we, until we do another issue.
Great. Any questions or comments?
Well, I have a comment. If this had been a rating decline-
Yes.
It would have made headlines.
Yes, it would.
And it's not a rating decline, it's a rating increase, and it should still make headlines. This is really a very good thing in a very difficult economy.
I think it reflects the good work that our staff do on a daily basis-
No doubt.
...to keep us in a strong financial position as well. So thank you, staff.
I will comment that in the Washington Post today, there's an article about Virginia, the state of Virginia, which I haven't copied, but that they have a severe revenue decrease, and they've adopted a bipartisan plan, and I emphasize the word "financial plan," to get them through the next two years. And that's what I think we're, the one thing they don't emphasize, if I read the last sentence here, in the outlook, it says, "We believe what we consider as Hagerstown's adequate local economy constrains upward rating movement." And it's my thesis that we can't raise taxes again, or we'll get less than adequate. So we need a plan to get us through. The state of Virginia is taking from the rainy day plan, but by developing a plan, they're trying to keep their AAA rating. They're publicizing it, they're presenting it to agencies. And that's what I talked about last spring, that I think we're going to have to do, to say, "Here's our way of getting through these rough two years. Don't cut us, we have a plan." So that's what the state of Virginia just announced. It's bipartisan, both parties in the legislature were backing the governor on it. And that's where I think we need to go. There might be some tough things in that, though, and some temporary lack of movement in some of these issues here. But if we have a plan to restore it, or get back to it, then I think we can get through it. But I don't think we can just keep raising taxes. I mean, we're already, you know, people are stunned when I told them we had raised them 11 cents, so I don't think we can do it again. I said, that, my thing was, that has to get us through the next two years.
This is a little tongue in cheek, Marty, but at least we don't have to raise $18 million Virginia has to raise.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments on the rating? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Michelle. Thanks for the good work.
All right, we're just about on schedule here. The next item is our resident 311 program update. It's X311, right?
X311. Yes, in many communities across the nation, 311 is the universally recognized phone number by where people could get information about their local government. So if someone's trash wasn't picked up, if they have, if they want to request a city facility to reserve, if they have, you know, bulk trash that they don't know how to get rid of, this is the one phone number that they could call to get those answers. In the interest of time and likely expense, we decided to integrate this feature within the existing city phone system. So now people can call the main city phone number, dial extension 311, and they're directed to a phone tree that has several options of frequently requested services or frequently requested information. We also have a resident X311 navigation on the city website that's accessible from each page on the city website. Our website has a wealth of information, lots of great information, but the resident X311 page streamlines all of that information for residents. You were, included a screenshot within your packet information, and that gives you all of the different navigations. We actually populated that based on a year's worth of website analytics. So anytime someone typed a search term into the city website, we're able to track that, and we analyze that data to see what people are searching for most. That's how we came up with those navigations, also with discussion with department managers. What are they seeing, what are they receiving phone calls for, receiving requests for most often? You may recall the mayor had suggested adding a list of frequently called phone numbers on the reverse of business cards. In response to that, we also have, the back of city business cards now has the 311 logo that includes the telephone number, as well as the website URL, and it also has one of the QR codes, where you can scan it with your smartphone, and it will direct you right to the 311 page. You'll also be seeing this in phone books, even though it's obsolete to some, we know it's still used.
They still use phone books?
Indeed.
I thought they were just as boosters on a seat or something, maybe.
Don't go there.
We actually-
David, I'm going to tell you, there's still a lot of us that are out there.
We actually discovered that some of the city government phone numbers were outdated, and so this is a way that we can quickly update all of that information and give people a direct link to what they're looking for in that way. Again, it's located prominently on the city website. It's modernizing the way we share information to our residents, enhancing our transparency as an organization. One thing we are working on is, you can access this from your mobile device. Through Civic Plus, we've discovered that they are not a mobile responsive website, so the way you see it presented on a laptop, on a regular computer, is different than when you see it on your smartphone. So we are working-
It's not better.
Right. We are working with Civic Plus to enhance some of those features. I've been in touch with other municipalities who also use Civic Plus, and they have desired-
Share those same concerns.
Exactly. So there is a-
They better get with the program, or they're going to lose customers.
Right.
Yeah.
So that is something that we are working for in the, towards in the future. And we have a lot of the features that many other communities have. It doesn't look as aesthetically pleasing from a phone end of things. So if you see on the screenshot, you're able to report potholes, you're able to report concerns about a property. The chief was here a few weeks ago talking about reporting a concern to HPD. You're able to do that through this page. So again, we streamline all of this information, kind of one-stop shopping for citizens to file requests, or to easily find contact information for needs that they need to have addressed.
How are we letting people know that this exists, besides having this public presentation here today?
So we have the business cards, we have, again, it's prominently listed as one of the navigations on the city website, through social media, through our Hub City 25 channel, things of that nature.
Should we put something-
We'll get a good article from the Herald Mail, it's important to put that in there.
Of course, of course.
Well, it is, 311 is a public service and needs to be reported. I'll say that right now.
I would think, you know, maybe-
If it isn't, not a public service.
A little slip in the utility billing, too, might help folks know, you know, because-
Yes.
Again, not everybody, you know, is on the web, or we're looking for those things electronically, and at least that way they'd have that information there at their fingertips. Oh, I can go call this number, is a one-stop shop for the pothole, or the light out, or, you know, to report a concern to HPD, or street tree maintenance, all that good stuff.
Absolutely.
Thanks for your work on that. Any questions or feedback for Aaron?
I think it's great. It's just that people find out about it, if I remember.
Tell the federal government they need to now put smartphones on the street as giveaways.
Smartphones on the street as giveaways?
Correct. You're saying use smartphones, so you need to tell the federal government-
Everybody needs a smartphone.
...that he's providing phones for everybody, so now they need to do that, since we're doing all this technology.
But even if they gave it away, would you still, would you use it, even if it was free?
No, I wouldn't. Not me. But other people would.
Maybe. Well, it is the way of the future.
Technology, I'm just saying.
Yeah. It's the dawn of a new day.
It is.
Thanks, Aaron. That brings us to the final item on our agenda. And I asked our clerk to put together a timeline of the lawsuit. I'm sure everybody knows by now that the fire union and the police union have sued the city of Hagerstown. There was a petition drive that was started earlier in the spring. The timeline sort of outlines the, how that issue developed, and what actions we've taken as a body to address it. Purpose of this discussion is just to let the public know what our individual positions are on this, and also to let the public know that we have a response due, I think it's by the end of this week.
Thursday.
By Thursday, and that response has been drafted and circulated to council members and will be filed in a timely manner. And I think I just want to start the discussion by saying this, because I've said already that I think this petition drive was flawed, but I think there's really an argument that will happen in two arenas. This is primarily a legal argument that will be fought in a legal context, in a court of law, and a judge will have to decide the constitutionality of the question at hand, which is, is this appropriate material for a charter amendment to be put on the ballot? And I think in that case, there is a legal argument to be made, and our legal counsel will make that argument effectively, I have no doubt. The other arena where this battle will take place is in the court of public opinion. And I think this is where the public really needs to be aware of the context in which this petition has been brought to bear. It's my understanding, if you look at the whole history of this issue, it goes back to the election. And I've said this in executive session, I'll say it in public. The fire union did a great job of advocating for their organization. They endorsed five candidates for counsel. Every one of those people is here at the table today. Shortly after we took office, we began negotiating with all of our unions on contracts. Everybody knew that we were in not the greatest of financial conditions. So we were making promises to unions, and there was a sincere desire on the part of council members, I believe, and myself, to increase and enhance wages. And there was a recognition, at least on our part, although maybe not on the part of some of the unions, that we had kept up with the cost of increasing health insurance and other associated costs for employees, although as part of what we came to understand was being told to the public throughout this petition process, that point was never recognized. In fact, they were being, members of the public were being told that we were taking those benefits away, when in fact, that is not the case. So we successfully resolved three contracts with three of the unions, enhancing wages for all three of them. When it came down to the firefighters, we received questions, queries about the budget. There were several-page communication at one point given to staff with questions about where the money's going, and the bottom line is, they thought that we were not being transparent about the budget condition of the city. So eventually, it came down to the expectation of our property reassessment. We told the fire union, "We can't make any promises now until we get a definitive answer on our property values." And of course, it came in just about what the city administrator projected, which was about 8% decrease in our property values. Even still, this mayor and council were looking to enhance the wages of the fire department. So it was, or the fire union, it was never a question of whether the fire union was going to get more compensation. It was always a question of whether and how much. The argument that they made, and I have phone calls, I have voicemails from members of the fire union, we were communicating. There was never a question that we wanted to offer them more. The bottom line is, they wanted four missed steps made up, they wanted to be made whole, we kept hearing that expression, in one fiscal year, which was- we kept hearing that expression, in one fiscal year, which was just not going to happen. Anywhere in the country, no union has, whoever missed steps, was fully restored in those steps in one fiscal year. So shortly after the beginning of this calendar year, in fact, just after we settled a contract with the fire union, we were made aware of this petition. The petition, of course, is to modify the charter. The charter amendments include recognizing the union as part of the charter, and it also requires binding arbitration. Binding arbitration, it is the opinion of the majority of us sitting around this table, would be a bad thing for the city of Hagerstown. We also believe it is inappropriate charter material to put on the ballot to basically take the legislative authority away from the city council to determine the business of the city of Hagerstown, in particular, the tax rate and the budget. Because what binding arbitration would possibly do is allow a third party unelected by the people of the city of Hagerstown to decide who gets paid what, and it would just be a comment upon this body to approve the necessary tax increases to pay for it. And that's the bottom line. That's what a judge will decide. A judge will have to decide the legal question of whether or not it is appropriate charter material. The other argument to be made is the one that will be carried out in the court of public opinion. And it has to do with the ethics involved in this petition process and the fact that a third of our employees are suing us. And not just any employees, but sworn officers and firefighters. And the fact that the petition was carried out in such a way that people were lied to, a third party was hired, which obviously didn't do a good job. And when the unions were made aware of the bad job that their contractors were doing, we noticed there were some changes. There had been disingenuous offers after the petition was submitted to the city clerk to then withdraw the petition, when at the same time, they were out there gathering more signatures. And again, I can't emphasize enough the manner in which this petition was put forth and continues to be pursued with this lawsuit, I think really calls into question the integrity of some of the folks behind this. I still have an unanswered question as to whether the membership of these unions took a vote to take legal action against their employer. Don't have that information. So it's funny today that I received a Public Information Act request from, on behalf of the fire union, from Mr. Carpenter, about my trip to Europe and whether or not it was any city taxes were used for that trip, which I've already stated in public, there were not. But that is the level of pettiness that some of these people are going to. But I would like to say that already, city resources have been used through staff time to count these petitions. Now with this phony Public Information Act request on my trip to Europe, the good faith negotiations that we would expect did not occur. All the while, we're trying to enhance their wages. Meanwhile, they're out plotting to change the charter so that they can benefit their own, to line their own pockets, to benefit themselves. Obviously, I feel passionate about this. I do understand there's a separate legal argument that a judge will have to decide on the constitutionality of this process. But I do believe that the conversation about the ethics and the manner in which this petition has been carried out should be a matter of discussion, not just around this table, but in the community at large about, no one, no one doubts that we support our police and firefighters. And I couldn't think of a more union-friendly mayor and council than the one sitting at this table right now. So to find ourselves in this position, to me, is highly ironic because, well, people can make their own judgments about what they think of the actions of the unions in this case, but I think it smacks of blatant self-interest on their part to basically say to this council, we bought you, we got you elected, you better give us what we want, or we'll sue you. And that's what they've done. So I hope that this generates a lot of public conversation about the legitimacy of not only the petition, but what they're asking us to do by changing the charter. With that, I'll turn it over to anyone who wants to speak next. Mr. Metzner.
Go ahead first.
Mr. Alshard.
All right. Well, we've not had a public discussion on this issue, and I think there are many of us who wanted to do that. We've had executive session meetings where we met with council. As it relates to the methodology of the union in electing the petitions, I've had my comments before in public on that. And more importantly, I, months ago, sat down with whom I felt were the appropriate people and leadership of the fire union. We had our discussions and I don't need to discuss that any further. I've expressed my viewpoints on it in the past. And one thing I indicated to them, which I believe, I've said it, I'm not going to keep kicking that dog. I'm not criticizing anybody who is, but that's not my intention. Petitions and politics are very similar. People say a lot of things in the political world that aren't true. The fact is, there has been a substantial amount of signatures by way of voting citizens in the city of Hagerstown who have petitioned this to referendum. I personally am not going to question whether the citizens who signed that petition understood what they were signing or not, any more than I'm going to question voters, whether they voted for the right people or not. For reasons that they had, they presented a petition to us and they said they wanted this on the ballot. Because of that, I would vote a resolution to put it on the ballot. I think that's where it belongs. I think that instead of telling the public that we were not going to, when I say we, we as a council, I never supported that position, but that we as a body would not put it to referendum, is candidly what led to the lawsuit. And that is, we presented you with a petition and the law says you should do it. The separate legal issue, of which there are many, including the fact that it seems to me binding arbitration is a negotiated thing, but yet this is a referendum to say we have to have binding arbitration and we're supposed to say what the binding arbitration is, but that's negotiated. So I see a myriad of potential legal issues if the referendum passed. But I personally think we're putting the cart before the horse. I think this should go to referendum. And if it passes referendum, and I think that's a big if, but if it passed referendum, then it would be up to the body that was elected at that time to decide whether or not they were going to litigate this matter. Now, the other way this could be done, which I think would be very satisfactory, would be to moot out their lawsuit entirely by us passing the resolution and at the same time directing council to fire declaratory action and the courts to determine whether or not this is something that legally can bind the city. And if the courts in fact say that it cannot legally bind the city, then we have our answers and what we would then have is a non-binding referendum. And it would in fact be a, an issue at the time of election for our voters to vote on, not only as it relates to the referendum issue, but to who's going to be at the table at that stage of the game, having had the court already say, we would not have to follow that because it would not be binding. So that's my position. I understand the entire legal issues that council have indicated to us. And I am in no way, shape, or form indicating that legal counsel's wrong or that these are things that are never going to get to litigation. I just disagree with the way it's happening. I think, having been presented to petitions, that we should in fact make the resolution to put this on the ballot and it should go on the ballot. And as far as the litigation is concerned, if this body wanted to spend the expense on the front end for declaratory judgment action to determine whether it would be bound, we could do that or we could wait until the next election, if it passed, and leave that to the council. I don't know, I didn't ask the question before. Bruce, what is the contract up for fire and police?
Well, we started the first of a two-year contract, July 1 of 14, so it'll run through June 30 of 16.
Okay. So I don't think there's any way, shape, or form before July 2016, even if a referendum passed, it could ever be implemented because it's subject to negotiation is, I mean, I don't understand how you can take the right of, candidly, the unions to negotiate because under what they've presented to us, we write the binding arbitration legislation. And that's the type of thing, I don't understand how it works. I don't understand how there can be binding, a binding referendum that directs us to prepare an ordinance that says what the arbitrator will do because that takes it totally away from the bargaining process. So there, and that's not even a discussion we've had yet. We've had the discussion about the legislative stuff. So that's my position. I think I've stated it the way I want to.
Next, Mr. Gurbaker.
Kristin, did you want to go or don't want to?
It doesn't matter.
Do it, raise.
You can go ahead. If you have comments, that's fine.
Well, unlike my esteemed colleague, I think that we have a fiduciary, we as a council, and mayor and council, have gotten legal advice that this does not, this kind of language does not belong in our charter. And I think we have a fiduciary duty to take that advice rather than rely on what the legal system might do on these issues in the future if we accepted the referendum. I think we need to take it step by step. And here's what it boils down to, to me, both the legal side and the public opinion side. Number one, I agree with the mayor, we could have been much nastier in this fight than we were. We could have not, we could have refused to recognize the, we kept their benefits and everything in place. We could have imposed a contract on them. We did not do that. We did not do that. Instead, we offered them a very generous settlement. This would, if the binding arbitration is upheld in the future, instead of mayor and council deciding on what the financial situation of the city will be in the future, it'll be put in the hands of an arb, I would say, an arbitrary arbitrator. I'm sure it's a profession, that they all have standards and all that, but I know what arbitrators do. You can see the results in some of the metropolitan counties. They split the difference or they do what the unions have done. They assume the city has resources, it doesn't. The fire union was never able to come up with a hole in the budget that they could say, here's how to fund us, because there isn't one. And the budget ratings show how well we've done, and by the way, we've continued to pay into their pension funds and into other funds created by employee compensation problems to a much greater standard than many other municipalities who have revenue issues have been able to do. Discussions we've had today about the bond rating have illustrated that. I'm not sure we're going to be able to do that. I hope the rating agencies understand, but the settlements that we did agree to, considering our revenue outlook, were very generous. So we have acted responsibly. And yet, on both the legal side and the public opinion side, they're saying we neglected commitments to them. I can say personally exactly what, I did not ask for endorsement. When I got one, they called and asked for a statement and I said, I will do what I've done in my both previous terms on the council. I will try to do what's fair to the employees to my best ability, but I can't make any specific promises. I know our financial outlook is always tight. And when they called me before the election, that's all I said. I made no specific commitments. And I would bet that as a body, we haven't. And to say and go out in the street and say that there are things this council promised that we didn't come through on borders on ludicrous. So I think it's our fiduciary obligation to pursue, to pursue this issue in every way we can, because it's a real threat to the financial stability and the future of this city.
I would just reiterate, I congratulated the union, and I'm not blaming anyone for being endorsed, by the way. I think they did a great job. They had two people at every polling place on election day, they were handing out literature, they had yard signs. They did a good job of being, of their political action committee. What I guess I resent is this notion that we're just going to give them whatever they want, without regard to our fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayer. And it begs the question, if there's binding arbitration language in our charter, what incentive is there to negotiate with the city on wages and other benefits and working conditions? The other implication here is the operations of the fire department and the police department. It has created a lot of pains for our two chiefs, I can tell you that much. And the idea that unions are going to run the show, whether it's in the police department or the fire department, needs to be seriously considered, that there needs to be some respect for the chain of command in these various organizations. And also, like I said, what incentive would there be to negotiate if they know they can go to a binding third party that's unelected, that would generally favor the union? And with that, I'll reserve further. Mr. Alshard.
A couple of comments. The first is, I know this will largely fall on deaf ears, the breadth of this conversation, but, you know, I've been elected to office, won and lost, never, never at the hand in either case of the actions of a specific individual or group. That's just a plain fact. It has always been by the hands of the voter. And I feel in our deliberations, unlike the court filing, that we, as a group of parties, fail to take into account who we're actually affecting, and it's the voter, it's the citizen. And I can tell you very plainly, you know, as a municipal employee myself, I am as plain and honest and sincere in that job as an employee as I am an elected official. And I could not conceive, in that position or this, of going out and defrauding the citizen of basic information. I just, I just couldn't, I wouldn't do it. And, you know, when you read this, this court proceeding, it's broken into three pretty obvious parts. And I'd just point out an item in each one, and the first is this writ of manumissage, which basically says that, you know, the plaintiffs have these rights, you know, because of the validity of signatures. There's no validity that I have found during this deliberation in these signatures. We can certainly argue the merits of whether the individuals... the individual signing is fully aware or not. But when you are purposefully misleading that signer, there is no validity. It is inconceivable, as well, to believe that in any one of these venues in which individuals are asked to sign, they're trying to keep up with their own day-to-day lives. And they expect, when a municipal employee or someone representing them approaches them, that they do so with some plain honesty and sincerity, that there is no purposeful deceit in that process, and that you would prey upon their simple unawareness of the greater details involved. And that is unfortunate. And I think it speaks to this issue of validity. The second is this declaratory judgment, which I find odd, because if you read points 27 and 28, it basically says that a declaratory judgment by this court will terminate this controversy. The very same thing that's being asked that the voters terminate, the entity is asking the court to decide upon. And I've got to say, it can't be both ways. When we, as representatives of our voting public, as our citizens, you know, convey upon us their opinions during our deliberations, it is that broader base from which we draw that decision-making process. It isn't the courts that we seek that deliberation from. And, you know, when I read this declaratory judgment points and the argument that that is the only justifiable process which involves the rights and liabilities of both parties to be resolved, it's talking about our employees and the elected body, and completely forgets about the citizenry that is impacted. The third is the injunctive relief. And there is a statement in 32 and 33, which says that this elected body, this elected body, did two things. It was a breach of our duty, as imposed by the Maryland Constitution, and that we disregarded that duty to uphold the Maryland Constitution. Again, I've been elected office and a municipal employee, and I can't think of an instance in either scenario in which I have breached the constitution of the state that we all take an oath to abide by. Because when we take that oath, we take that oath to represent the citizens that say, go to that seat and represent us to the best of your ability. And clearly, to the best of that ability is not, is not to simply hand off that responsibility to some arbitrary third party to make the citizens, to make the decisions that the citizens entrust us to make. And we can argue that, you know, this is a process of, you know, of being weighed in the court of public opinion and being weighed in the courts. But at the end of the day, it's a process that most wholly excludes the citizens at its end.
Mr. Munson, do you have any comment?
Firefighter Union endorsed me in the campaign, and I truly appreciate that. But I believe, indeed strongly believe, that binding arbitration is not appropriate material in a city charter. And I've voted based on that belief on this issue. As an elected city councilman, ultimately, the only real power I have, only power that anybody sitting around this particular table has, is budgetary. That's all we have, when you get right down to it, the very, very bottom line. And if that's taken away from us, which this charter proposes, charter amendment proposes, then that diminishes the whole system, and indeed, will someday throw it into total chaos. So, I voted what I believe, and I intend to continue voting what I believe.
Ms. Nye?
Take it to referendum. You can go back and find my comments way back. I'm not even going to go through it again.
Any further discussion?
Can I just say, for the record?
And I think that's the crucial thing, is that even though, you know, basically, the vote came down to three to two as to whether or not to take it to referendum, Mr. Metzner has a very nuanced position on this. And I think that's important to recognize. Does our legal counsel have anything they want to add to the discussion? Or Mr. Zimmerman?
I don't have anything in issue or questions.
I'll just say that I appreciate the council approaching this on a number of levels. One being the legal issue, that obviously is evident. Also, the question of an initiative of our employees that, as has been said in here, and has been said in many circles, could possibly have deceived the public. That's a significant, significant organizational issue as well. And I appreciate the comments where people are saying we need to consider both the legal issues as well as the manner in which the petitions were gathered.
Any other comments? Well, with that, was that your city administrators' comments? Or do you have anything to add?
We're shifting to general comments. I had one, which is just a heads-up for next Tuesday. That's the Chambers Annual Dinner Meeting, which the goal is to have you out there no later than 6:00. So, just a heads-up, we possibly may start at 3:00 or 3:30 next week as we firm up the agenda with the mayor. But just to give you a heads-up, we'll shoot to have the agenda done by 5:30. That gives you time. The dinner is served at 6:30, but that gives you like a half an hour if we get out there by 6:00 before the dinner serves. That's it for me.
Okay, thanks. Who would like, Mr. Brubaker, you want to start with council comments?
Sure. I commuted to the MML Fall Conference in Annapolis last week, two of the days, the two full days only. The, at the Fall Conference, the body as a whole adopted the long-debated recommendations of the Legislative Committee. That, number one, for our legislative initiatives, that is beyond the usual review of all the bills, but the high, the significant initiatives, number one would be the traditional highway user revenues, which affect all municipalities. Number two would be a new development in interpretation of the planning statutes of Maryland that would, you know, following a little bit on our prior discussion, unions would take away powers of elected officials to make specific decisions on comprehensive plans, which is not practiced here or in many, many other jurisdictions in Maryland. This was brought up by Rockville. And either the law needs to be clarified, or there needs to be a different statutory interpretation, because it comes down to opinions on the meaning of the law. So, that's number two, to get that clarified, one way or the other. Some of us are working on it as we speak, but I hope it can get done outside the legislature. Number three is a request by Gaithersburg to, well, and other communities, to reduce the ethical, the reporting standards under the Code of Maryland for municipal officials, because many, particularly the smaller communities, seem to have trouble filling their elected positions and some of their other positions due to the stringency of the ethical requirements that are being imposed. So, that's the third initiative. On the side, at gatherings during the conference, both candidates for governor spoke, Lieutenant Governor Brown and Mr. Hogan. And they both promised to restore highway user revenues. So, we'll see how that turns out. Neither one said how they were going to pay for them. There is a, what I call, lockbox initiative. There's really keys to the lockbox, but it's on the ballot. There's a, you know, a trust, transportation funding thing on the ballot. But there's also keys to that lockbox, so we'll see. And finally, the governor made his swan song address to the conference, and was in a relaxed mode and moving on to other things, apparently.
Iowa.
Yeah.
New Hampshire.
And, but it was interesting. And so, things are moving on.
Thanks for representing us well, Marty. Who wants to go next? Mr. Metzner?
A couple of things. One, this last week was just another example of what happens when our citizens decide they're going to make our community a whole lot better by joining in with city staff and saying, will you help us do this? Porch Fest was just wonderful. It reminded me of the pop-up shops for that reason. It's our citizens saying, you know, we're going to do this. And city, will you give us some assistance? And I think that was wonderful.
The plate scrapers were really good, too.
The plate scrapers are really good. And just to throw it out, two of the four are Kristen's cousins.
Oh, really?
And so, you sometimes wonder where all that talent comes from.
You're related to the plate scrapers, huh?
Yep, two of the four of them. Absolutely.
You and Bobby.
And they were wonderful. And the Hispanic Festival is the second example, again, of citizens wanting to do something. Forget about, because I couldn't make it. I'm sorry about the color race, color splash, which undoubtedly was also.
1,500 people they had.
Absolutely.
Raised $100,000.
And we need to, rumor has it that Dave has been the motive to our beat. And so, I'd like to formally welcome Dave. And it's nice to have a very fine reporter who's assigned here, instead of wondering who's going to show up every week. And the last thing, Martin, I would say to Martin, sometimes we use the wrong verbiage. And so, knowing what you were talking about, really and truly, it's not the ethical requirements that anybody has a problem with, it's the financial disclosures. And I think they're very different.
Well, it's the financial disclosure within the ethical.
Right. Well, no, no, I understand. We at this table understand what you're saying.
Falls under the rubric of ethics. Everybody's against that.
That was a good clarification.
And that's what I wanted to emphasize. And so that people understand, because unless you fill out this financial disclosure, you don't understand. And you have to wonder, whether you're a municipal elected official or a member of the traffic and parking, why it is that you have to say who you bought your property that you live at now, when you bought it. I'm an example, I got my property 30 years ago. I mean, you have to say how much you paid for it, how much it's worth now, where you work, what your income is. And you look at those things, and you're not sure what that has to do with what we do. Or more importantly, and it's much more important than us at this table, it's the volunteer-appointed board members.
Right, I think that's more crucial than anything.
That aren't running for office, who aren't getting compensated, who haven't put themselves in the public eye, but are strictly here on a volunteer basis to help our citizens. And they get hit with these financial disclosure forms that any reasonable person would look at and say, why do people need to know this information? And I just wanted to emphasize that it's not about ethics. It's about telling people things that don't seem relative at all, especially to appointed volunteer board members. We're all big boys and girls here, and we can live with this stuff. But we shouldn't expect those folks don't.
For me, it's real simple, because I don't have that much.
And the last thing I won't say is what you're about to tell us about this weekend at the park, which is going to be wonderful to follow up with what happened last weekend. Thank you.
It's going to be exciting. Who wants to go next?
I will. I want to know where the reporter's desk is at. I wanted to ask that last week. Because there's not a desk. And I see this with my hand at a tablet, and I see the camera. And I'm thinking, okay. And then usually, WHAG-TV is also over there. So, where's the desk?
It's somewhere, but I think what they're doing is they're waiting to install the new TV monitors that were there, so they're not moving furniture around, but it's around.
And it's coming back?
Yes. As far as I know, right? I mean, there's no.
Not in that location because of the monitor.
Of the screen.
We'll find a place for Dave.
So, we don't know where it's going to be, but, okay.
But we did get him comfy seats.
Okay, yeah. But then, see, you may be taking up a citizen's seat. So, we need you at a table.
We do have full houses many times throughout the year.
Yes, we do, all right?
At least we hope.
Right. And for John's information back here, and this whole blighted housing situation, and those that are empty, we had a break-in down on Locust Street, right beside Yom's house. So, it continues on, and hopefully, the legislation will soon get to where it needs to get to. And from what I'm hearing now from a lot of people, there are very, very different foreclosures. And I think that it's going to be a case by case, Lou. It's not going to be as easy as what you thought. Yeah.
Oh, I think you're right.
Yeah. I mean, you know, you're concerned as far as the poor people that don't have, you know, like, well, they've already moved somewhere, perhaps in an apartment. But in a lot of cases, that's not the fact. And with that, I'm telling you, there's going to be a lot of different, different views on this one.
Can I ask for a follow-up? Just, Penny brought up something I mentioned. I did bring up, and it was Kristen that brought it up as a potential initiative, but I wasn't allowed to do more than three. Foreclosure, I did bring it up anyhow, in the forums. And MML is working on it, you know, we hammered on what the actual issues were, like bank, you're trying to get through to the banks. I think that's the toughest one. And the legislature is, well, reluctant to move in that arena. So, we're going to try, MML, to the extent they can, is going to try to work on that issue this winter. So, what will come of that, I don't know. And to me, it's the closing the barn door, you know, a little bit. But at least, at least they're bringing it up as an issue, but it won't be until next winter. They're going to bring it up at the mayor's forum, I believe, the mayor's.
Well, it's just sad, I know what you're talking about, Penny. And one of my neighbors who, you know, had her house on the market for a while and had three offers on it, and the bank would not accept any of those contracts. Basically forced her into bankruptcy, and will put the house up for auction. And that's what some of our citizens are up against, and even worse, I'm sure.
But then, in some cases, it swings the other way. One name can be on a deed, can say, you know, what bank? You can have it back. And then the family moves into a brand-new home, puts it in the other name. So, that's what I'm saying, there's a lot of different things going on out here. Yeah. That's it.
Who wants to go next? And then there were two.
That would be.
Go ahead.
Mr. Munson. That would be Mr. Munson.
I have no comments tonight. I've probably already said enough tonight.
Well, I would just reiterate all the praise for the events of this past weekend. Porch Fest was great. Oh, well, that's why, yeah, go ahead, Kristen. Yeah. I thought he was already done.
No, I didn't say anything. I have two, though. The first is, you know, while we talk about petitions and things like that, I try to avoid, you know, mentioning our employee groups, because I find that they're both, you know, very competent, capable entities that serve the city and the citizens well. And this is just an issue that we'll have to get through as a group. But that said, I wanted to use this example, just as I brought up the example of, you know, being at the city park the other evening and calling, and, you know, they're right on the spot. They resolve the issue amicably. And, you know, you just don't get that in the rural areas. And there's no substitute for that appreciation, though, when you do call, that they're there. And I use this example, I was having, well, I came downtown at 11 o'clock at night, the other night, walking the dog again. And it was just completely peaceful and quiet. And, you know, you hear all these stories. So, it gets to that whole notion of perception. But here I am today, in the middle of the day, eating lunch. But here I am today in the middle of the day eating lunch at the Flying Pie, and I call because there's two gentlemen just going at it in front of the library. I'm thinking, down here at 11 o'clock, you know, and there's not a peep. And I'm here in the afternoon trying to have lunch, but I call and they're there right of way, right away. But the issue I have is, you know, our chief and I think that the police force in general express all the time, "If you see it, call. If you hear it, call. If it's going on, if it's concerned, you call." You just call because you never know what the situation is, and they're the entity that resolves it. And, you know, while nothing came of that altercation, you've got 100 people sort of dining and working and moving and milling about downtown in the middle of the day. Clearly, it's inappropriate. You don't want the individuals to be arrested, you just simply want them to know that's not the proper conduct to be, you know, occurring in front of the library, any other part of the city, in the middle of the day or any other time. And that was the result, you know, you move that on. But it just struck me as odd, you've got, you know, literally 100 people around and nobody, nobody calling to say, "Hey, you know, we're going to call the appropriate, you know, force in to take care of the issue." And I will only say that I would note that the only way you're going to make individuals like that aware that that's not acceptable in our city is to do it by those numbers, to call every time and say, you know, "This isn't acceptable. You need to move on. You need to go somewhere else. This isn't how we conduct ourselves as a community." And so, you know, that was a very good thing. The last thing I'll say about the Porch Fest is, we were riding home from another event, and I'm looking in the rearview mirror, and I've got, you know, they look like zombies behind me. And so we were going to come, and I was like, I drove by, and I was like, "There's no way I'm getting them out of the car."
We understand that.
And I said, she was just like.
You just need to explain if you're a.
Yeah, she was just like right on, so there was just no way I was getting them out. So I missed the Porch Fest, so.
It was a good time. I'm glad you mentioned about the general membership of the union, because it's like I said, nobody questions the sacrifice that they put themselves through every day. And I really think this is, again, I question whether or not the general membership of these unions voted to pursue this legal action against their employer, the city of Hagerstown. But I see this as a conflict between the union leadership and the city, not as a conflict between individual members of the union and the city, because I think we all respect the job that fire and police do every day. And along those lines, I want to thank the Washington County Citizens Corps for their remembrance in the park last Tuesday evening after our last meeting, because it was a very nicely-done ceremony once again. And I just wanted to get the word out that they're having Emergency Preparedness Day this Saturday, so when you're not at City Park enjoying the bike ride with the mayor that starts at 9:30, or the Hager House, or the sculpture unveiling, or the 75th Anniversary of the Valley Art Council, you can check out Lowe's. They have the Lowdown on Preparedness, and that's at the Vaso Boulevard Lowe's store, Saturday from 10 to 2. Also this weekend, Arts in the Park, Sunday afternoon, Hub Opera Ensembles, 1:00 PM in the Band Shell, and Bark for Life is happening at the Fairgrounds from 2:00 to 4:00, and I'll be there to help judge, I'm assuming, some K-9 costumes or behavior or something. I'll be there to judge. So it'll be exciting, another exciting weekend in Hagerstown, never a dull moment. Any other comments? We will be adjourned. Thank you.
Volleyball. See you.